Call or reg or the special meeting of the Pennington County Convention Order. This is a really a, a single subject matter this evening is going to be relative to the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan funds. And I will start it out by asking Commissioner LaCroy to lead us in moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. A motion to review and approve the agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second to approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five. So relative to the American Rescue Plan funds, I'm going to call on Jay if Jay doesn't mind first.
I'd love to see you.
I know that you and Tracy have spent a considerable amount of time going through that document, so.
I'm confused. I thought this was about AARP.
Yeah.
And he's a comedian. Are you going to go on tour?
Your membership is, your membership is delinquent in that.
So Jay Aldrin with State's Attorney's Office, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, you mentioned Tracy and I, my partner in all of this have, quite a while ago, we were asked to take a look at the plethora of federal regs and so forth on the use and eligibility of ARPA funds. And that was before, just so you know, that was long before we had heard of any other kind of request for those funds, right? It was just the idea was how could the county use those funds on county projects, on our campus projects? And we discovered fairly quickly that, I don't know that there's any experts in the field of eligible uses of ARPA funds and the compliance piece of all of that. We discovered that the rules themselves were fairly convoluted and complicated and kind of hodgepodge frankly. So we, we tried to focus on, I mean, we understood that there's a very specific eligibility criteria, can only use it for these purposes. There's compliance requirements and there's risks and liabilities of getting it wrong and so forth. So our goal kind of switched a little bit to, we have, as I understand it, we'll just call it $12 million that we're talking about here tonight. Where could the county spend that money with hopefully the least risk in getting it wrong? By getting it wrong, I mean by not using it in a way that the US Treasury would believe that you should have used it. And then you're subject to paying it back and so forth. And so we tried to focus on those areas. There's multiple, there's a gazillion things you can spend the money on. They all come with different levels of risk and justification and compliance and reporting. And there's such things that the Treasury identifies as kind of presumed eligible uses, ones that they're like, you're, you still have compliance and reporting, but we're going to tell you upfront, some of these things are presumed to have impacted your community in some way due to the pandemic. And so what Tracy and I focused on were areas that seemed to rise fairly high up on that level of things that are more upfront, more obvious, and have some presumptions that the Treasury has already made, made about eligible uses. And those categories that, that we focused on were mental health, mental illness, substance abuse, so drug and alcohol abuse, and economic assistance, kind of four areas. And just looking at, for instance, the mental health and the substance abuse, the Treasury made some presumption in essence that the identified population is your entire community. Meaning everyone was presumed, or I should say it this way, the pandemic was presumed to have impacted your entire community by heightened or increased mental illness due to, as you can only imagine, financial issues, the economic turn with COVID and whatnot, and substance abuse. People turn to self-medication, we'll say in some, some realm. With those being presumed to be eligible, then we felt that we're in a little bit safer zone of not missing the boat. In other words, you can look at salary, for instance, let's break it down, the jail and the care campus over here. In the jail, they have a COVID unit. And so there's folks, correctional officers will say that work that COVID unit. So that's what they do. They're dealing with COVID. They're mitigating or trying to prevent COVID-related impacts. That's kind of the overall umbrella of ARPA funds. Over at the care campus, as you obviously know, they deal significantly with mental illness and substance abuse, stabilization center, crisis care center, drug detox, you name it. So as we see it, as the best that we can opine on the, on the topic, you can cover salaries of folks who are predominantly providing those services. Well, obviously, if you're a counselor in detox or you're working the COVID unit in jail, that is what they do. It's not just predominantly, that is what they do. So we felt more comfortable there. And then everything comes with it, medication and furniture and fixtures and stabilization unit, supplies, food, transportation, there's just lots of things that are related to providing those services are eligible expenses, near as I can tell. And we feel pretty confident about that. So that, that's the mental illness, substance abuse, and the treatment and care of those that are undergoing those ailments or illnesses. Then turn to economic assistance, Barry Tyse, he's probably here or is intending to be One of the things that Health and Human Services do, and Health and Human Services as a category is actually identified as one of those presumed areas, meaning that your low and moderate income households are presumed to have been impacted more than other households due to the pandemic and COVID. And some of those eligible uses are the things that Barry's office does every day, rental assistance, utility assistance, medication, education, transportation, all kinds of those levels of things that he could talk in about in far more detail than I can. So again, we felt, well, we clearly have that. We have a Health and Human Services Department. The standard of the population you receive goes beyond just lower moderate income. It's based on federal poverty guidelines that I think Mr. Tyse will be able to tell you they meet. It's what they do. That's, that's part of their factors in determining who is eligible for those services that I referenced. So with all of that, the idea would be, as I understand it, is to try to put into budgets going forward, the next three years, 23, 24, and 25 budget, which would meet those deadlines for obligating funds and then having them expended before December of 2026, I think it is. Would be to budget for the cost of those services that I described in broad form there as an eligible obligation and use of those funds over the next three-ish years that would more than, from what I understand, more than cover the 12 million. So the other one, I guess I wanted to mention was the Rapid Valley Sanitary District. They also have an eligible project. Water is another thing that the US Treasury identified, providing sustainable, clean drinking water to popular, your resident population, taking into account the anticipated population growth. I think I just described what we're talking about out in the valley. So they also have a project, I, I don't, just enough to be able to tell you that, that sustainable drinking water projects based on population growth are clearly one of those things that is identified as an eligible use, just like the things I described about the county on campus projects. So that's a quick overview. I could keep going on just about little tidbits, but I think maybe turn it over if you have any questions for me.
Questions to Jay?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Say Jay, these, the mental health, the drug abuse in the jail, who would monitor that to see that it was getting spent and in the right fashion?
Well, when the county, see, the county would be in that context, there would be no sub-recipient, the county would be spending dollars on its own programs. And so we would be responsible for all of the, I call it, compliance and reporting requirements. So that would fall on the county and frankly, Cindy's already heard me say it, it'd be the auditor's office, of course, that would, would face that challenge of trying to monitor those things. It does get, and there'll be other folks here tonight that can go into far more detail than I, I can, but it gets, each level of passed down or passed through monies takes on another layer of responsibility, not only for that passed down recipient called a sub-recipient, but the county remains the parent and has the obligation, as I understand it, to oversee and make sure compliance is being complied or applied at those lower levels as well. So every, every layer is another area of responsibility. And I'll just say, I'll be honest, today, it's another area of risk since it's harder to control each of those layers than your own program that's under your own roof. So I'll say just that much about that and let other people talk in more detail about that, but hope I answered your question.
And I think it did, but if it wasn't dispersed under certain guidelines, they could actually come back and say, we want our money back.
Absolutely. And that's obviously the first thing that Tracy and I saw, call it the pucker factor. But you look at that and you're going, well, we're going to be giving opinions based on $12 million, and that's not something fun to be wrong about. And so that's, you know, the overriding principle, why we chose to try to find those projects the county could do with hopefully the least amount of scrutiny and reporting and justification and so forth, because that's at least how the hodgepodge of rules read to the bench of our ability to understand them, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ross.
Jay, would it be advisable to, regardless of who handles the funds for the county, to hire an administrative oversight for this, someone who actually, that's what they get paid for so that they're ultimately hired to be liable, I guess, so that if they fail to follow it, or if one of our staff fails to read the rules correctly or do something, is it, is it advisable to do that?
I, that would be my advice, absolutely. There's no question. It'd be nice to have an outfit, a firm, a consulting group, an accountant, whatever it would be, that would hold themselves out as an expert, if you will, on this ARPA compliance, because I don't know that it's exactly like other federal grant funding. I, I think it's somewhat of a unique animal to itself. So yes, that would be wonderful to have that. Honestly, I don't know of any. I don't know who that is. But certainly that would be nice to, to have that intermediary, the pass through that could, you could feel comfortable with. Certainly, I've got to assume that our auditor would appreciate that kind of a buffer of compliance and knowing that you're not nyes and croses and t's.
She's the next one coming up, so.
Yeah.
Get ready, Cindy.
Any other questions, Jay?
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Cindy, moment. So share with us a little bit of, of your concerns if this money were to go outside, if it was going to be a sub-grant like the Rapid Valley. Share some of those concerns with us. And I, I'm not going to limit what you, what I want you to tell us, but that's one of the things we want to hear.
I'm going to just follow this with what Jay said. You know, every level that we, when you sub-grant, you do expose yourself to more risk. There's more reporting requirements. If we're spending the ARPA dollars on our own things, it's easy for us to control. We know what's coming in, we know what's going out, we can make sure that everything's done. And I'm not saying that Rapid Valley wouldn't be able to do the same, but with a construction project like that, I can't look at the invoices and know that everything is right. So in that case, absolutely, I would want to find someone, and as Jay said, I don't know of anyone, that would be able to oversee the administration of at least that 5 million. So I, I do have those concerns when it comes to, to sub-granting that, that money out.
Okay. And I take it that you, along, we heard Jay say that, you know, there's no doubt in his mind that there's other purposes we could use the money for over the course of the next few budgets, and I presume that you don't have any doubt that that's also true, that?
Right. And I know you guys have it in your packet, the information from Health and Human Services, and then also from the Sherma Fund, items that we know would be, according to Jay's opinion, we're going to stick with that one, that would be eligible expenditures of ARPA funds for the county functions. So, and Liz has been poring through the reporting requirements, trying to make it easier for us when it comes to what we would have to do if we sub-grant. It just, like I said, it just gets more complicated the further out we go. I did talk to the state auditors today and, and, you know, they're not really going to say yes or no, do or don't, because that's not their job. But it would add another level, I mean, they agreed, it would add another level of risk to the county, and it would also add more time to their audit.
Sure, sure. So how would we even pursue finding somebody that might be able to, to do that type of reporting and take on the, basically?
I really, I really don't know of anyone that, that does that. And I suppose we just have to start.
Well, obviously, nobody's done it in this program before, since it's brand new.
Right, right. Yeah. And this is a little bit different than some of the other federal grants that we have. And because the money came directly from, from the Treasury to us as a recipient of the grant, there is no middle department like the Department of Justice or the Department of Transportation that already has the rules in place and already has things established on what you have to do to report. You then have someone to reach out to and say, is this right? Is this wrong? What's my next step? We won't have that with the ARPA funds.
Okay. Other questions? Cindy?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ross.
Cindy, we talked yesterday, and so I'm going to ask you a question. I don't know if you received it. I know that last email you sent me, you said you had not received anything, but have you heard anything about DA and R being able to monitor this, if, you know, if they match any of those funds? They have to monitor their funds, just like we would have to monitor our funds. Have you been able to find out if they're willing? Have you talked to anybody of whether or not they can monitor the funds, since they already have to monitor their funds regardless?
Jennifer did reach out, and they would not be responsible for looking at our funds. They would, they would not take that on.
I get it that they're not responsible. They would, they wouldn't take it on as, as the intermediary to monitor it, since they've already got to monitor it for their amount that they would be allocating out.
Right.
So even though they've got it all in place, if they matched, if they did, if they hit a matching, the DA and R, they've already got established protocols for, for that. They're unwilling to continue monitoring all the funds that would be appropriated.
That's correct. That's what I understood from Jennifer. I don't know if you want Jennifer to come up and speak to that, but she did reach out to them.
That would be good to have clarification.
Jennifer Sietzmo with Black Hills Council of Local Governments. When I reached out to DNR, they said that the county's funds would actually have to be drawn first, they wouldn't be drawn concurrently. So typically, when we see a project that has funding from two separate sources, whether it's to, you know, a state and a federal program or local cash, often they will allow us to draw those concurrently. But in this case, the DNR is requiring that the county funds are drawn entirely first, and then the, the state funds would come in after. So there would be some level of oversight with the technical stuff, the engineering, the bid specification review, and the pay applications, they would need to review for the purpose of being able to determine that all of the county funds have been expended. But the, the level of review they would do on the engineering side of that is less for the 5 million you would put in than what they would do for their own funds.
So, Chairman.
That's part of the frustrating aspect of this, is that the state is basically dictating how we can use our ARPA funds. I mean, if, well, they are from the standpoint of saying that we have to, if, for somebody to get a match of ARPA funds from them, it has to be our ARPA funds. It can't be funds, other funds that, that we may have. It's got to be specifically ARPA funds.
I actually don't know the answer to that. I, I've.
I talked to Andy Rules late last week, and he said, absolutely, there's, there's no give or take on that. It has to be ARPA funds in order to match our funds for him to get, get those funds. So I'm, I'm not sure why that makes a difference to them, but it does, so. Commissioner Adkar.
So, thank you, Chairman. So I'm trying to figure this out, that we keep saying it's easier, it's less complicated if it just stays in the county, but I don't think it's going to be any less complicated for us to follow the rules and regs than putting it in Rusty's. So from what I've seen and, and the rules and regulations, if we grant him the money, not as a grant, but we grant him the money, it's a little bit different. So what we're going to do is we're going to make it, and these funds put in four different entities, not basically because we can use those ARPA funds for those entities, not necessarily that their budgets are having issues in those entities, but something we can use in those entities. And we had this discussion yesterday. For me, oversight for four different departments and regulating that and trying to figure out, I don't think, and you're the auditor, isn't any easier than one guy showing and doing the same thing. Meaning if it was, okay, I'll just say, I've seen Rusty and his paperwork and follow-through and the things that he has done, I don't think it's going to be easy for you, and I don't think it'll be easy for him and these departments that have to do this, all these four, in order for you to be able to track them. That's not going to be easy either. So I think the whole thing for you is going to be a lot of work, no matter what we do. So with me, the, the compliance is the compliance. You have to comply no matter who you are, whether it be Rusty or our four departments or Cindy making sure that they're complying. How we get there to make sure that is done right, sorry, Ms. Liz, I understand, but I think they're just, like I said, some of, some of the stuff that we're talking about, I have other things to visit with, but we're talking about compliance right now, how much risk it is. I'm seeing some of the things that we're going to be doing in the future just to be able to support other projects in Pennington County with bonds and other things. We're going to be taking lots of risk these days just to be able to take care of the needs of Pennington County. So in the future, I don't think, unfortunately for Ms. Cindy and her employees, I don't think it's going to get easier on any sense of the word for the needs of Pennington County for the future, so.
Mr. Chair. I don't think it's going to be easy for anybody, but I guess what I'm looking at is one is going to have more risk than the other. That's what I'm looking at, because I'm always trying to follow the path of least risk. Liz, apparently you have something you would like to share with us.
I do. Liz has it. I'm a grant manager with county under the auditor's office, and you bring up a good point about risk and compliance and all of those things. The difference with spending the ARPA funds on county functions versus having a sub-recipient is with a sub-recipient, a whole host of extra funds and guidelines and compliance comes into play that would not be present if we spent it straight down from the county. As said before multiple times, you know, this is way different than any other federal fund we've ever received, because it's coming directly from the US Treasury to us, whereas typically, we have an intermediary that we can go to with questions and answers. And the Treasury has advised that they're not even going to review what we want to do and say, yes, that complies or that doesn't comply. And we haven't, you know, the, as Jay mentioned, the, I read through the final rule as well, and it really, within your own document, conflicts itself, as with the uniform guidance. So we, if we sub-grant, as mentioned before, there's a whole other standard and, and level of compliance that we have to adhere to, not only as the county, but we have to make sure that Rusty and his team comply. They're fully capable, I would imagine, of doing so, right? But we cannot, as a county, there's a requirement of us to not only make sure that Rusty signs off, but that we have our own people signing off, because that is the requirement from the Treasury to say, you are spending down your, your ARPA dollars accurately. So we're going to have to do that for Pennington County funds, for sure, as we should. You know, if we ever get any federal compliant, any federal funds or, you know, grant dollars, we need to have that compliance. The difference is, is we receive the money directly to county funds, we have that capability and that process, you know, to do our own guidance. We don't have to do that added security and that added process. The other thing that's worth mentioning is, we also don't want to be, be found in non-compliance, because that will have an impact on not only these funds, but really our, our future with federal grants and, you know, well into the future. And I don't know where they stand with, you know, if they don't, if we don't follow the guidelines now, how would they feel about us being able to comply with other things down the road? And we receive.
Roughly $2 million every year in federal funding.
So we would be putting ourselves at substantial risk with that decision. And I think the guidance that we've received and what I've looked at, outlining all the additional guidelines and requirements that are required of us just to sub-grant are, are well above my abilities. I am not an attorney, and I've gone to Tracy and Jay multiple times to try and figure out what things mean. And the reality is, is it's about as clear as mud as far as the uniform guidelines. The other thing worth mentioning is, they have the compliance guidelines for the ARPA funds themselves, but we also, in June 2020, passed our own county uniform guidelines, which add in additional layer of guidelines that we approved, you all approved, that we have to adhere to on a county basis. So we have the, the regular requirements as part as just Pennington County receiving the funds, additional guidelines and requirements for a sub-recipient, and then our additional guidelines as our uniform guidance states that the county passed in June 2020. And some of those match, some of them collaborate, but there's some that are outliers within all three areas. And so we would have to make sure that we adhere to every single one of those.
Chairman, can I ask her a question?
Yes.
So if we just gave it all to the sub-recipient, would it make it easier? No. Okay. Okay. I'm listening to what you're saying, Liz, but I also see it going in four different departments. It still has to go through different pieces and parts. We're putting something that complies, we're saying complies, because we can get the money in those departments, right? So what's your bottom line is, do we need it in the budgets? Or because it complies and we can use it, and it's money that is coming from ARPA, complies, makes it easier, we can put it in the budget, and then once we comply, then it opens up general fund money. Is that, is that the goal here? Is that why we're trying to do that? Because if we're taking ARPA and because it complies, and it complies in these categories, that's what I'm hearing, if it complies in those categories, it's a lot easier than doing a sub-recipient, then it's because we can use them in those, not necessarily that those budgets at this time needed. So for me, that's, that's. So, um, for me, that's, that's, and, and maybe I'm saying that wrong, but it, it is money that we can get, but we also, because it's gonna take a subrecipient or we wanna maybe do a subrecipient with that, um, I'm not necessarily in agreement how we're getting there. Does that make sense? So Cindy, it's easier, I'm listening to you, Ms. Cindy, and I appreciate that, but I also, um, think you've done an amazing job at our budgets, and I think Pennington County has done an amazing job at our budgets with this staff, our seventeen department heads. So because its needs are in the budgets and we can comply, doesn't necessarily mean that that is for me okay. So, um, 'cause in the long run, if it was needs in those budgets and we needed to com, and not just because it complied, I'd probably feel a little bit differently about it. So that's just, just what I'm thinking. And Liz, you do, by the way, a wonderful job for us on grants and, and what you just gave us for advice on the work and the things for subrecipients. I, I do appreciate that, Ms. Liz.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lloyd LeCroy.
Thank you. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank the staff for all their hard work on this. I mean, this is something that they've been working on for months, ever since they've come out. We didn't know, understand what we could use it for. It was limited to just this at one point in time, and, and you guys have, all the way up to the last minute, I think, 'cause I remember at the building committee meetings, we were talking about how, where it could be used at, 'cause we thought we were pretty limited. The next thing you know, we had these presentations on our, on our agenda for a meeting, and everything got crammed in all at once, as far as what we can and can't use it for. I think Cindy, and Liz, what I'm hearing from you guys, when you keep it in-house, it's a safeguard. If there's a mistake to be made, the money's still in our banking account, and we have to give it back, it's there, we can give it back if a mistake was caught, and just, that's my thought process on that, whether it's true or not. But, I mean, you know what I mean? Uh, they could change their mind on some things, may not accept them, whether it's Rusty's project, Rapid Valley's water project, or something that we're doing. But the safeguards, we have that in our coffers. One, the other thing I wanted to ask you, Cindy, is one of the things, the most that we could bond, the county could bond for, we talked about this, without having to raise taxes. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
I did do a little bit of research on that, because of, we've all talked about, you know, the, the jail and the needs and, and the space study for the entire county. Um, and in order to keep that accumulated budget, accumulated building bond budget at about the same level, we could go twenty years for about twenty-seven million dollars. If we wanted to stretch that out to twenty-five, we could go up to, I think, about forty million, but the first few years, we probably would have to increase the accumulated building bond budget, a few hundred thousand dollars to cover the interest, 'cause the interest payments are gonna be a little higher on that.
Thanks. Did you have anything else you wanted to add at this time, Cindy?
If I may.
Yes.
When it comes to actually doing, you, you're talking about four departments, but they are all within the county, and we would create a budget specific to what those departments can spend their money on, so that when those vouchers come across our desk and we audit, we'll be auditing to that as we pay the bills, just as Commissioner Croy alluded to. We would be the ones going through it and expending the funds. And that just keeps it a little more in-house, and, and it does make it easier.
Commissioner Roskin. So Cindy, if we could find a consultant, would the expense for that consultant be covered by ARPA funds?
Yes, it could be.
Okay.
I think has something.
Sure.
Chairman, Ms. Liz has something.
The other thing worth mentioning is, all of those departments have definitely been affected by COVID. Um, you know, obviously with the jail having a specific COVID unit, they have those staff going in there every day, risking their lives, and, and same with Health and Human Services. They've had to make changes to their entire staffing to respond to some of those needs. So I just want you to know that as far as, um, you know, there is a need, we do have a budget, but they've been doing above and beyond since COVID began to respond, and I think we're lucky to have those staff that are willing to go to work every day and deal with that and be in communication with a lot of the folks that may or may not be COVID positive, um, and still go, go to work and do their job every day. So I, I see what you're saying, Deb, but I, Commissioner Haidcock, sorry.
No, you're okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Here goes.
Um, but I, I do wanna just note that those, you know, there has been a definite impact to our community and to those entities that, that are identified within the budget.
And Ms. Liz, I, I'm not in disagreement with that. I'm just saying, was our budget impacted by that? I think we did amazing with auditor, with this team of people, um, and everything you said, you're correct. Um, there was a need, they stepped up, they did it. My thing is, do they need it in their budgets? Um, the big thing is, we budget well in Pennington County. We have good auditors, good staff, um, it complies. So I appreciate that, that's the big thing, it does comply. Um, because it complies, does, and it's easier, is that okay that we do that so we can put it in, you know, have more money in the general fund? That's the theory for me, whether it be wrong or right, what, everything you said is definitely right. When you said it was a need, it was an impact, it was. So I appreciate your input, Ms. Liz.
Any other questions, Liz or Cindy, or either of you two have anything else you'd like to add at this point? Jennifer, did you have some other items you wanna cover or answer questions? Or, uh, as the planning district, we know that you're gonna be involved in, in this somehow or another. So probably to a bigger degree than you'd really even like to be. But I think, you know, one of the things that we have is, we don't have a lot of other similarities in South Dakota relative to this. Uh, I think we're only talking two counties that may be in this position, that being Minnehaha and Lincoln County. Uh, do you know of any requests that either of those have had for ARPA funds to be a, to go to a subgrant?
I have had conversations with, uh, both Lincoln and Minnehaha. They are the only other two counties in the state that received in excess of ten million. Um, they have received requests for, um, subawards, and they have not acted on them. Um, the staff there really do align with the things that Liz and Cindy are concerned with on the subawards, just the extra level of subrecipient monitoring that's required by, uh, federal, federal guidelines. And another big part of this is, and, and Cindy already mentioned it, is when you have a, a direct entitlement from the US Treasury with no program, uh, program staff to help administrate those funds, it, it makes the, it puts the burden on the county. They already have that burden, but to add another level of, uh, subrecipient monitoring, there's a whole other, um, guideline that's needed to be followed there. Not saying, um, your staff aren't capable of doing it, I just, it, there is more, more work involved with that. So they, they have not acted on it, and their intention, if they can, is to, to utilize all of their funds without doing subawards.
Do you have any thoughts on who a third-party monitoring, doing the accounting could possibly be?
Well, Cindy did, and she asked if we could do it.
Good idea.
So I, I'm struggling with the same thing that the staff are struggling with, and that is, um, when they drafted the final rule, they took, they took program requirements from many different programs. So we administer federal funds through FEMA and EDA and HUD and EPA, and every one of those agencies, federal agencies, administers those programs, that it's all the same federal requirement, but they each interpret them differently. So as I'm reading through the final rule, I'm struggling with, well, would we, would we administer the way HUD does? Would we administer the way FEMA does? Would we? Because when they put them all together, but didn't offer any kind of staff or program staff to interpret how they intend to follow the federal rules that are attached to the funds, it, it leaves everybody wondering, okay, what is, what is the correct way to administrate? Because, for example, um, NEPA, the, the Environmental Protection Act, when we work through federal programs with FEMA and with HUD and with EPA and EDA, anytime we do a project for that and we're doing an environmental review for those, um, each of them has their own way of ensuring that all of those requirements are met. So in my mind, as I'm reading through it, I, I don't know how I would do a good job, I don't know how I could serve you best and, and ensure to you that you're meeting all those requirements. So I did have, I did have to say no to Cindy that I don't, I don't believe we're the correct entity for that reason, just 'cause I don't have a program that I can talk to and, and answer, you know, get answers from.
I presume Treasury is not a normal one that distributes funds. This is a once-in-a-lifetime, probably, thing that Treasury has done.
They distribute to those other agencies that I talk to, I believe, is how that typically works.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassner.
Cindy, maybe, maybe I'm hearing this wrong, or maybe I, I should just ask a question. From what I heard you say, whenever, um, the guidelines are set out for what you can spend, what we can spend the funds on in those departments, I'm just gonna make some assumptions here. You know, salaries, I, I don't know how much of the supplies or whatever furniture, I heard Jerry mention furniture and things of that nature. So when those funds are done, your audit goes and says, okay, we bought a desk, we paid the salary, um, those are authorized by whatever code, whatever page and all that. That's, that's what you're doing, right? So when another entity, a sub, a subgranted entity, if they tell you, and, and we'll just use Rusty since we know that's what we're gonna be talking about here a little bit, you know, we bought twelve-inch pipe, we put it in the ground, blah, 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 and he verifies to you that this is the project that we got the money for, how is that any different than what you're currently doing with the audit so far? I'm not trying to put more work on you, I'm just asking, what's the difference of that whenever you're verifying that? How, I mean, they're, they're telling you they're spending it for that, for that project.
And I wouldn't doubt that, but I myself have no knowledge of construction, of water mains or anything like that, so I wouldn't know whether those pay apps were good, bad, or indifferent. And so we would need to rely on someone else to look at all of that stuff. When I look at an invoice from the jail that says we purchased toilet paper, it's pretty easy to say, yes, that went into the jail and that was an allowable purchase, maybe not for this, but, um, or salaries. We can rerun all of the payroll registers, and I can verify everything that's there through our own systems, and I'm confident in that. I would not be confident in taking on the administrative side of the Rapid Valleys as a subrecipient.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Haidcock.
To that degree as well, guidelines, requirements, um, I don't think anybody, we know to a certain extent what that looks like, but none of us have done it before, so we're starting from anew. So how do we know how hard or, not hard it is, just be, Liz, you might know, you did subrecipients before, so I'll be up straight on that. But, um, he's got a plan here and it's lined out, and, and like you said, I might not know, but it's not got pieces and parts, it's, all has to do with water. So to me, if it was, he needs it for his Rapid Valley building, and we don't know he's spending the money, and those pieces and parts are a million different pieces and parts, this pretty much tells you all about the water line. It doesn't tell you like, you know, I have to do this piece and this piece and this piece. The guidelines say you can do water, uh, I don't know what it said at the back, I read it, um, water projects, infrastructure product, products. If you can't see from the guideline, if you, Cindy doesn't know about construction, but anybody that got that paper to see if he was following the guidelines, um, on a subrecipient to make sure he was using that money, I think that's pretty straightforward. Like I said, if it was something different, like you had, okay, Holly's department and she has the paper, she has some this, she has different pieces and parts, she has her employees, um, that's a lot of guideline to follow, 'cause you're trying to figure out if that qualifies. Like I said, if you look at this, it's pretty straightforward. This is a water project with water stuff in it, there's nothing different in there that you can see that he's, he's putting in a, um, you know, the guy that's doing the water line and his employees and stuff, he's, he's telling you the pieces and parts of it. So to me, the guidelines, the plans, the requirements, to me, it depends on what you're talking about in subrecipient. If we're giving it Black Hills Workshop or something, and there was all kinds of piece of moving pieces and parts, but I think the infrastructure is pretty straightforward. That's, that's why I think it's a little bit different. Um, and maybe, like Cindy said, she doesn't know those pieces, but, um, I think anybody that was a treasurer or whatever and said subrecipient water and looked at that and said, well, I don't know if that twelve-inch plug goes to the guideline, um, I don't think they're gonna do that, they're gonna pretty much look at this and go, holy cow, that's a, that's a water project.
But Commissioner Haidcock, they wouldn't just be looking at just that piece. They're gonna be looking at every invoice, they're gonna be looking at all the bid specs, they're gonna be looking at all the engineering, they're gonna be looking at every invoice that comes in to get paid. But the, so it's not just, they're not just gonna be looking at a thing that says, we got this much of pipe coming in, and, you know, like you said, that piece of paper. It's not broken down to that basic level.
But, Miss Cindy, the one point five, if it's the engineering, they're paying for it themselves, so no ARPA, no involvement. Um, the only involvement is this and then the pieces and parts that you said. To me, uh, I think he's got it dialed in, meaning, um, he's good to go, um, we'll let him talk on some of his stuff. I think that's gonna be, be the bottom line for me, is that if, if he's moving forward, he's got his engineering company, he's good to go, ready on that, and then we're saying because he's a subrecipient, it might be harder to, to, uh, track, 'cause we have it in-house. I don't know, I don't, I don't do a lot of paperwork on, on grants and stuff like Ms. Liz, so I respect what you're saying, Ms. Liz, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassner.
So Holly made a point, but then it kinda triggered something in my brain. You know, there is an entity right now that is working with the federal government to do a water project in a SEDITA. They're gonna have to account for all that stuff, they're gonna have to show how that federal funding is spent for their SEDITA project, for the water project that's going in. They're being subgranted that from the DOD, um, I don't know how, if it's going through Ellsworth and then to SEDITA, or if it's just gonna come straight from DOD. But they're obviously gonna have someone that's gonna have to track that and that's gonna be familiar with another water project. It might be wise to can see if a local CPA or firm of similar sort who can actually do that audit would be able to do something like that. They're gonna have to do it for SEDITA, because they're using federal funds, and maybe we speak to them to find out if they have someone already pegged up for that, because that's a project they're using federal funds and they have to have it all tracked, and it's a multimillion dollar project. It's just something that just came to mind as we're, as we're talking through this.
Okay.
Bill, so if you can probably, Chairman, listen to Rusty, 'cause I think we're guessing what he's doing.
Yeah, we will. Jennifer.
I'd like to make a, a distinction and a little bit of a clarification. Black Hills Council can help adminis, if you, if you offer a subaward, we can help administrate those things that they are talking about. And yes, DNR would be reviewing the pay applications. Um, there would be a con, uh, con, engineer, an engineer, contracted engineer onsite, ensuring that those things are happening. I don't, I don't think that's, uh, the concern. If you end up in a situation where, yes, DNR has put in SRF funding or ARPA funding and your funds are matched with that, that's less of a concern to me. That's a very small part of it. I think the concern from their end is, when you read through the federal procurement policy, it requires that, um, they, that you, the county, ensure that subrecipients have inter, written internal control policies, that they're registered, um, through FFATA, uh, that they have their own uniform rules for, um, federal procurement, their own federal procurement policy. I don't know if Rusty has those things, I, I'm sure he can get up here and tell you if he does. And then on top of that, you will need to ensure that, um, that all of that's spelled out in any kind of an agreement you do with them. So I, I think there's just more levels of work on the written procurement policy, procedures, uniform guidance, uniform rules, and that, and, and I'm not saying that they don't have those, I don't know the answer to that. I think the fact that the county would have an obligation to ensure all those things happen with a subrecipient is, is an extra level of work that they would have to do, um, and monitor that, that they wouldn't have if they're already, if they go in-house with the departments, that they're already monitored, and that all comes through Cindy anyway, so she's already doing that for herself. So from administration of the SRF funding paired with your funding and drawdown requests, that is something we can do, Davis Bacon compliance, um, payroll review, obviously there would have to be a contract for us to do that, um, and we're more than willing to help, and we can do that. Um, but it's, I, what I can't do is act as an intermediary between the county and the subrecipient, because I don't want the responsibility of managing a contract between you if it goes wrong. I'm in a. I'm in a losing situation no matter what. Um, so I just wanted to make that distinction.
Okay, thank you. Rusty, come on forward. Rusty, uh, before we even start here, I want to say, you know, I really appreciate you stepping up to the plate as far as the regionalization, uh, being willing to be a part of that, uh, and being a real leader in that whole area. And, uh, I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that doesn't wish, uh, you well as far as what you're proposing to us. Um, but as you just heard, I mean, there are some challenges that we have to, that we have to get through. And, uh, i- if you would, at the end of your presentation, if you try to address some of those concerns as to how we may be able to work through some of that, I'd appreciate it, so.
Thank you, Commissioners, for, uh, uh, taking your time out of your day to listen to our proposal again. Um, I, I can address them, uh, concerns right now. Um, Rapid Valley Sanitary District is a public entity. We have to have pro- follow the procurement, uniform guidance rules, there's no choice. Um, when we're using SRF funding, DNR funding, RD funding, this is nothing new to us. Um, we've been, the risk that I hear in concerns of is minimal to zero. We've done this several times. We've spent billions of dollars over the years, uh, using the same process that we have to follow. We have no option but to follow it, uh, so, um, Davis Bacon rules, all the procurements, uh, the, the submittals, the bidding requirements, every, every piece of the, of that pie we have to follow. And we've done it with millions of dollars of previous loans and, uh, agreements. So, and I did read through the CFR two hundred point three three two and, uh, pass through entities, uh, going to a sub, a sub recipient, I mean, there is, uh, there is some rules, but, uh, um, I'm not the expert on that, but, uh, you know, you guys do got to validate how our spending is. Uh, I did speak with Mr. Bruhl's as well. And it is, does come down to how much, uh, risk you think and how much oversight you think you need. Um, and that's up to the county. Um, but that is why we have one point five million dollars worth of engineering that we'll be paying for as well. And Dustin's got to leave here, so I'm going to let him speak to that. I mean, he is the one that would be doing the plans, submittals, all the requirements, the procurement that we have to do, the oversight for construction, day-to-day supervision, construction supervision from a certified engineering firm. And as well as when the pay applications come through in detail of what has been done and what has been completed. They review it, pass it on to me, I review it and we can pass it on and we can pass it on to the county auditors to review. I understand they won't know what the water mains are, the restraint joints, uh, tracer wire, you know, do we have three inches of bedding or not, right? I mean, that is where we, our expertise is, we put in hundreds of millions as of today's value of, uh, infrastructure and, uh, I'm confident that there will be no, um, concerns or risk assessment. And being just a quick, because I got to get Dustin out of here, um, being just real quick, I did contact our auditors as well. The audits that we have to perform over on our seven hundred fifty thousand dollars A one thirty-three audit, this would be something that we'd have to perform again. Um, you know, all of this uniform, uh, guidance, uh, rules that we have to follow, our auditors do all that, they do it every time of the several million dollars on our treatment plan we did. And we have to meet compliance and, and pass through all that. I don't see there being an issue, I understand there's a risk, is somewhat of a risk, but we're not a, you know, a, a real small, very new, uh, system that's asking for federal funds. Um, we're over ten thousand people, we're bigger than Sturgis, we're bigger than Box Elder, we're on par with the size of Spearfish as for population. We're probably the biggest entity in Pennington County that houses the most dense, uh, uh, county residence. So, um, this is nothing new for us on procurement. This is, uh, every project we've done in the past is a procurement and I'll let Dustin speak, so. I'm delaying him too long.
Apologize, I have opening night of minors baseball tonight, so I was doing the lineup back there and got it sent in. So we have six o'clock first pitch, we'll be cutting it close, um, but we got it lined up. So to Rusty's point, I'm Dustin Dale with AE two S. Uh, we're Rapid Valley's consulting firm. Um, I've been working, uh, in consulting since the Barack Obama dollars came out, uh, in the late two thousands. Uh, we had changing regulations at that time, uh, we had projects coming out without the fully defined scope of what was eligible. Uh, we're constantly involved with the state at different levels, making sure that we're staying in compliance. As Rusty mentioned, we review every shop drawings, let's say, submittal that comes from the contractor stating what they are using. Uh, prior to that, we do, um, like, back up the process. So we actually do a spec book and that says what needs to be done to stay in compliance. That does require DNR approval, uh, since they will be, if they are to match funds on this, they will be reviewing that as well, so they review that as a public water system. DNR, not necessarily from a funding agency, but from a regulatory agency, reviews that. As a funding agency, they also review that, so it's a double review from DNR to make sure that we're compliant from a funding standpoint and from a health and human safety standpoint. Uh, once we do that and they approve the, uh, some, or the, uh, spec book, we then get shop drawings from the contractors and that is saying that this is what we intend to supply. Uh, so if we get that, with that, we'll have any, uh, purchasing requirements with that. The most recent is the Buy America clause, those are part of special certifications. The ARPA, uh, right now is gray in that area. We just bid a project in Brandon, South Dakota, uh, with ARPA funds from the state on that, following their most recent guidance. Uh, as that does change, we do stay up to date with the state on that, uh, and make sure that we're in compliance. If this is mixed with any SRF funds, ARPA will be, or, um, the Buy American clause will be included in that, uh, American Iron Steel Act, and we are used to using that, uh, staying compliant. Um, from there, we do have the inspector on site like Rusty mentioned. So as shop, or as materials come to the site to be installed, we check those before they go in the ground and make sure they are stamped correctly, make sure they're installed correctly. From there, the contractor and, uh, our firm will work on a pay application, contractor will submit that. AE two S reviews it and in South Dakota, a required licensed engineer, uh, is needed to sign off on pay applications prior to me submitting it to Rusty for his board to review and approve. So we have a lot of layers built into that process for compliance review, uh, to make sure that we're staying, you know. None of us want to lose out on funds, so we're making sure we're doing that. Our Rapid City office here alone, um, which I, I do manage is, uh, we're thirteen staff right now. We did over thirty million dollars in construction review last year. Eighteen million of that was SRF dollars through the state. Uh, as a company, we did over sixty million within the South Dakota loan. Uh, we had twenty offices throughout the Midwest. This is what we do and we want to make sure that we're taking care of our clients, whether that's Rapid Valley or the county.
Questions to Dustin before he heads out the door.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haldcock.
So Dustin, you've heard the conversation, um, compliance, sub recipient issues. Um, any thoughts on that? Um, have you read anything on that?
I have, uh, I'm an engineer, I'm not an auditor, um, I'm also not a political science major, so. What it comes down to is, the difficult part is we, we, there are some changing regulations on that. What I can tell you is we are constantly reviewing that, trying to stay ahead of that and making sure that everyone's in compliance, so. Um, I know Rusty's team, uh, you know, like their bonding credit, they are phenomenal at keeping their books in order. Uh, the way they operate, no one has, uh, one bad thing to say. Uh, don't see that changing anytime soon, you can see their board support here tonight as well. Uh, it's a very strong board, good employees, uh, just top-notch group to work with, so. Um, I know I didn't answer that directly on your, your auditor question. You know, one thing to note, I guess, is when we talk about what is an eligible expense, uh, there's no question that water for future growth is part of that, so. That's a very clear, clear depiction, I guess.
Well, Dustin, it says the Clean Water Act and everything to do with that is, is huge for the ARPA fund, so, um. The main thing I keep hearing is how hard being a re- sub recipient and the work that has to be done for it. And I keep saying, this water project, it's pretty cut and dry, it doesn't have a lot of pieces and parts at one cent. But there's still, Cindy and Miss Liz are right, there's still parts in there that they have to comply, but, um, I'll just say, it's no different than what the county has to do, the county's saying it's bigger risk. If I really believed that this, this company, Rapid Valley Sanitary District was that big a risk, guess I wouldn't be, um, for it. If I haven't seen what Rusty has done, if, and people say, well, we know he does a good job and everything. Well, I'll keep saying that the growth in Rapid City is going east. His projects, if you look at his project in the blue, that's for Pennington County and the growth for Box Elder and the area that we made a goal for Pennington County. The second part on there, the red part, is something that Rusty has to do with wells and other things that, um, at that point, if he probably, and Rusty can talk about this, he doesn't have to do that first part. He doesn't have to move us forward in Pennington County because he can do his second part without us. He's doing this first part, if you look in the blue, for these, um, loops and this different things he's doing on the water because Pennington County has told them, Valley Heights needs it. Um, planning has said we want to get rid of, um, septic. It's huge for Rapid Va- Valley, this is a huge project because it has the most dense population for Pennington County. Um, Elevate has pushed this through, um, as one of the biggest areas coming, um, for development. To me, it's a goal of Pennington County to do that, um, development out there and to do affordable housing and get those houses ready for the people that are coming from the base. If that's such a, a need of, and, and, and something that we have to move forward on it, who's going to pay for it? Are we going to tiff the heck out of it? I know there's other options, but this is, this is not a want, this is a need for Pennington County. Um, someone asked that Pennington County needed project or needs to spend this money on what Pennington County needs. Um, if it isn't infrastructure, we already said with the jail, some of that jail needs some infrastructure, some of that is not all water, sewer and different things for that jail. So where's our goals? Um, I think both projects are, are both well in need and I'll keep saying, I think granting five million is a no-brainer for Pennington County for what our goal is for the future and, and what this company, Rapid Valley Sanitary District, can do with that five million and add. I don't know if anybody saw it, I got it off Rusty's desk. He, uh, up there, uh, I asked the secretaries if I could take them.
Dustin's late for his game.
Sorry, Dust, Dustin, if you have to go, you don't have to listen to my speech.
You guys might be over, uh, overvaluing my coaching abilities, I'm a better engineer.
It's up, but for a long time. Bottom line is, is they, they do have fees and someone said they had to raise their fees. First, you need to look at their fees, their hookup fees for water and sewer and stuff, guys. So anything you give them for five million, those hookup fees that he's going to get, he's going to proceed to the next step and the next step and the next step. And pretty soon Box Elder, Pennington County is going to be well in need or well, um, move forward on water and then his next goal is sewer. So, um, again, it's just, i- if it's about the sub recipient, he's telling you, and so is Dustin, that they can do that work. If they were just guessing and then they're just saying, well, yeah, we can get it done. But I believe they can get it done, I, I, I just, it, it's a thing of mine for infrastructure, whether it be the jail or this, I think we can do a win-win situation, give them five million, use the rest if that's the goal. To put it through those four funding areas, um, H- Health and Human Services, Sheriff's Office and stuff, to put it in there and then, um, move it through to, uh, general fund because we can do that through that. Uh, that's fine, but I think both are well-needed projects and, and both well-needed to move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Roskinick. I guess one part of the equation we haven't talked about, and I'm sure he will, is that in the next few years, we're going to have to spend thirty million dollars on a county jail, so. That's, uh, something that I have to keep thinking about as well. Just wish we had more out there that we could distribute, but that, uh, thirty million, that's going to be a, a hard pill to swallow.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassiter.
So this might actually answer that question there, uh, Commissioner Roskinick. This is an investment in Pennington County. We know the growth is coming that way, the developers have been talking to us, Elevate's been talking to us, telling us the growth is going that way. We do know that there's plans for development north of the, um, two million gallon tank that Rusty's got here for priority one, we know there's development lots east of there. We know that there's going to be more development south of there. This is an investment in Pennington County that's actually going to add value to the land as the property gets built because we know we need homes, but we, we already know that because we see it happening. So this is going to actually increase the property value there that will, most likely, I mean, I'm, I'm not a finance guy, but I can only assume that as you change the land from ag, um, taxation to, um, residential taxation or commercial taxation, that's going to add revenue to our coffers, if you will, to help us offset the cost for the jail. So this is an investment that's going to help pay off long-term, um, because it'll add to our budget rather than, um, being a one-time spend and then we still have to figure out how we're going to get that funds to pay the, the interest and things that nature. So I think this is a long-term investment in the county to meet the needs of the growth, um, that's coming.
So Rusty, would you like to go through the rest of your presentation, probable cause and so forth, so?
Sure, you want me to respond to that or would you like?
Sure, you go ahead and respond to that first.
Thank you, you bet.
Thank you, Rusty.
No, I, I understand the costs and the, the other projects that were brought forth are, are important as well. Um, I'm not, uh, disagreeing with any of that, but if, I kind of financially, on the finance end of things, I kind of, you know, like the amortization tables and all them kind of numbers, you know, but, you know, you, you would be saving, you know, if a five million, you could go twenty-five million instead of thirty million on a jail, you do have an interest savings there, probably right at a couple million dollars, you know, um, let alone the five million. But, uh, that's a one-time, uh, savings. Uh, basically, um, with the development and infrastructure, what's the most important key for the growth of this entire area? It's infrastructure. Where does a county get the majority of their fun, or their funds? It's from tax levies, from new infrastructure, from new homes, from new development. Just in that area alone, you see in the blue, um, that also encompasses our yellow boundaries there next to Cheyenne Boulevard. That's, that's over, that's right at five hundred and some acres. Um, with this, uh, responsible growth that we're promoting and putting in the twelve inch water main and tank and such, um, this will drive development. Um, will it happen overnight? No, but it'll happen fairly readily, probably within five to ten years. You're talking up to two thousand homes in that area if you do the standard engineering design, quarter acre lots, which you know how they go nowadays, it's more like eighth acre, eighth acre a lot, so. You're talking over two million dollars in tax revenue annually, which is an annual annuity, not a one-time savings, so. I guess if, and then I'm not here to dispute and run numbers and go back and forth, but if I was looking at it on an aspect of, uh, beneficiary, beneficiary to the, the county, um, I would look at the revenue that it would bring with putting in this infrastructure. Sanitary District gains revenue from water sales and such and sewer sales, um, extension fees, connection fees, but that's, uh, somewhat minimal to the municipalities around here. Box Elder, Rapid City will benefit from this greatly as well, uh, through sales tax, so. All of this is, um, is an avenue to provide more, uh, provide for the future and be proactive. So, you know, we can move forward, we are going to have a, a, a more of an influx coming, uh, with people coming here and, uh, um, there, we're going to need more houses. There's, as there's a reason why we annexed, uh, nine hundred acres recently into our district where a TIF was allocated to, and that was for development because we know we're needing it. Um, so this is in the same aspect here. I mean, what this, uh, project does, um, allows a connection, uh, well, for first and foremost, why it was brought to the forefront was because of a need in Pennington County, a subdivision in Pennington County at, at the request of, uh, DNR, um, over a year ago. Rusty, would you be open to helping or assisting, uh, Valley Heights, Box Elder, um, area surrounding that, that sixty lot development, um, even the PFOs concerns? I said, well, yeah, I'm open to it, I'll bring it to my board and see if they're open to it and, um, we're very proactive and trying to be a good neighbor and trying to, trying to be a, work towards this cooperative or collaborative regionalization, um, so. This is a, this project here would definitely be, uh, um, a first step in regionalization. When the Missouri River comes, we will have interconnections, infrastructure in place, that's part of it. I mean, we ain't here to solve the entire Black Hills, you know, uh, issues, right? But if we're willing to, uh, step up and, uh, do our part. And, uh, as Commissioner Haldcock said, um, he asked what these other extension fees, that, that's all put back into development and more, and more infrastructure, so this can, can continue. Um, source water is key, that's why, at what time are we ever going to have the possibility of getting a match? That match will be utilized towards a well, so we have more source water, so we can continue to grow even within our district or, and within Box Elder can move forward, uh, other projects, you know, in, in the Radon Hill area or wherever, you know. It just depends on how much source water we actually, uh, acquire as we move forward. But, um, I think this project is key for the community, uh, for our future. Um, too often, we can be reactive and then we're in trouble and then how are we going to allocate this and pay for this? Well, one avenue of potential paying for the- Well, one avenue of potential paying for this would be more development, more tax, more mill levies coming in. Everything, all of this increases, benefits county, benefits the district, which we are the county. Benefits all the surrounding communities. So I would just ask you to, you know, seriously consider this proposal. Because there's probably not going to be much other opportunity ever of getting a whole match to utilize these funds towards this aspect.
Mr. Chairman.
Rusty, you've, you've talked to Andy Rules, you said.
I did.
What kind of confidence do you have that you'll be able to get the match?
Being a regional project, I'm very confident. I mean, I, I can't guarantee nothing and he can't either, but.
I understand.
Being a regional, that's, that's even listed in the, in the rules of, you know, depending on population. Thirty percent grant, pretty much guaranteed if it's a viable project. If, but, and then it also stipulates in there, being a regional aspect, a regional project, there is a possibility of even more being allocated toward that. But the match is up to five million and we have, we have a strong possibility of that moving forward.
And your engineering costs and so forth are above and on top of?
That's above and beyond that. Yeah, that's one point, right at one point five million.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Rusty, I got a couple of questions. And first of all, I think, you know, the first time we talked and, you know, I toured you by years ago before this one. I think you're doing an exceptional job and I think your plan's exceptional and it meets the needs of what we're looking at, totally. I think we need to look at the big picture. I wanted to, I want you to know what we're giving up to the taxpayers also. Number one, I mean, I know we're, there's a give and take, but I wanted to let that, that go. You know, when we first met and talked about this and I'd, I'd expressed that. This is before we even knew other money could be used for other structures. I said, how can we make this revolving fund to where this money gets invested, we get it back? And I heard Mr. Freitag said he had sixty lots and he was willing to have a hookup piece or whatever to help pay for that. That adds more stipulations and grants with all that stuff. But have you thought about, if this all happens for you? Can you do a hookup fee and be able to create a fund that's going to help with further expansion out in that area or other areas? A capital improvement, be able to put it into a capital improvement fund to be able to do that? Or, I'm not saying reimburse us, but I, I think it needs to be, some, be a revolving.
Yeah, I mean, to move things forward because time is short to, because we have to file electronically come tomorrow. And Black Hills Council is going to assist us in that and such. But that is certainly a discussion, yeah, absolutely, that we could look at. I have brought it to my board before and it is a, yeah, it is an option. I mean, if you're looking at the potential of, well, that section there, part of it probably in section three. And beyond up over the hill, thirty-something. Where the, where the area of improvement is, the district could implement an additional extension fee. That could be a revolving fund coming back to the county if that's something that doesn't fall out of parameters of any sort. I don't, he'll come up and correct me shortly here, but no, I, I believe that is an option.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of the things I, I'm all for because, you know, I've had phone calls from a person, well, the mains is just a half a block away. And I get, they want me to pay for it all the way down to here to be able to hook up. You know, not for your, this is further out on country road, so this has something.
And one thing to note on that, the district was just slightly different on that. We're probably the only system in South Dakota. I could be wrong. I haven't checked thoroughly, but, you know, with our operation and how our board is, boards oversight and such. You know, you talked about it's a cost to you and a cost to extend this and that as even a homeowner, right? Well, in the sanitary district, I mean, when it comes to the services and such, we're probably the only ones that pay for the entire service for the homeowners. We, you know, if they have a leak underground, right? Even in sanitary sewer on that side of things, if it's a collapse and a separation, we take care of that as well. Knowing the need of our constituents don't have that kind of money to do this. And we're very proactive on the water loss end of things, which is, is very key in operations. Because the money you make by finding lost water is tremendous. I don't think a lot of systems really look into that or manage that, but, or look into that. But that is key. So, you know, part of the things of us being, keeping things viable and going forward. But no, I got sidetracked there a little bit, but no.
No, that's good. One final question. If there, if, if this was to get approved with the stipulation that if you do not get the funding from the state. Would, would that money come back to us?
If I did not get the match, I would utilize that five million, five point three million towards priority one project. Because that was the initial request for us to come forward on was other systems out there, Pennington County system people. That don't have water or have not a sustainable water and then also other lots and as well as Box Elder themselves. That could use another redundant source because we are going forward with this growth. But that's what I would request to utilize it for if I did not get a match. But ultimately, that'd be up to the commission if they wanted it to come back, but.
I, I, I just want some clarification if that was a caveat of approving this. If you didn't get it from the state, what would you have to come back to this commission again and have discussions? Because by then it, it becomes not in such a hurry to, to get another grant. It's, you're wanting the full five point four for phase one.
That's for phase one and we'll do that if we get that. If we don't get a match, then we're still going to go forward with project priority one that's listed on the map up there.
That, that's what I wanted.
I think it's part of the clarification on that, Rusty, is if, is if you don't get the match. Then it's not a critical that any funding that you get from us be ARPA funds. And we would prefer not to be ARPA funds if that, if that's the case. It's not saying that we wouldn't fund it another way, but we would like those funds to come back. Just because of the reasons that you heard earlier. And that we'd substitute funds for more than likely them.
Mr. Chairman. Tal Wazoric.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, Commissioner LaSser, did you want to say something first?
Go ahead, Tal, but I was just going to ask a clarifying question, but as I thought about it for a second, I think I understood what you were saying.
Okay, well, Tal Wazoric with Gunnarson Palmer. As I think this commission knows, I represented a number of water districts, sanitary districts, some smaller governments. Done a lot of water projects. Got a couple of comments on things that have already been said that maybe I can help provide some experience. I, I want to go though to the last couple of questions that were asked first. Not necessarily following my notes, so mine might jump around a bit. But first of all, Rusty looked back at me when you asked about that tap fee because we had that conversation this morning. So, you know, I, I say that Rapid Valley Sanitary District does a good job and looks for ability to perpetuate this. And make sure it's fair and paid going forward. And that's one of the things, he's very open to that. We talked about some of the kind of almost what some people would call impact money. And, and we specifically, when he, we talked about those sixty lots. Because we were talking about those sixty lots, you get this project, the benefit to that, you know, if you figure those sixty lots, all get houses on them. That's, you know, figuring two hundred and fifty thousand a house, you know, that's a fifteen million dollar improve on your, on your base right there. Just for those sixty existing lots. That, I, I was at the last couple of meetings we just talked, but I did watch them on video and you guys all looked great. You sounded good on the April fifth one. You're calling in from somewhere. But, so, and as the developer talked about those sixty lots, he can't develop them because there's a lack of water. But those lots already even exist. So that's an easy step to get those underway if you, if we provide water to them. Now, as to the, the comment, Commissioner Drew's that you made of that ARPA fund. I, I struggle a little bit with that because I look at something like this project. And, and I actually think justifying this project can be easier for you guys. Number one, you know absolutely that this is ARPA qualified project. There's no question about it under the law. Number two, as Dustin was going through it, I'll just tell you, your auditor will get more substantiating paperwork on this and probably almost any other thing you do on this. You do, you do the pay request. You have a bid contract. You have, you have numbers for what everything should cost. If you, if you have a change, you have written change orders. The engineer has to certify that. We have to have a site supervisor on making sure it gets done. He provides reports for that. That report then that the engineer certifies has to go through the board, then it has to go to the state before he gets all paid. And that documentation and those many eyes is more than, you know, the comparison I was thinking about when the auditor is up here talking. When you do a road project and the, your, your highway guy sends over the bill. Your engineers, an engineer's reviewed it, engineer certified it, is probably bid. But the auditor doesn't go to make sure that ten inch culvert was actually put in. I mean, that, it's, that paperwork is going to be there. And, and that's going to be a lot more paperwork than you probably get trying to justify or show the track, the money for salaries. And it's going to be clean. You're going to have a lot of paperwork. I, I see this as, to me, this almost looks like an easier one to justify than some of those other functions. Just because of all the automatic documentation, and this is not documentation that's created for this project. This is stuff they do all the time, believe me. You, you do these federal projects, there's a lot of paper. And it's been, and I've done a lot of these projects. And even on, if the state says you have to spend that money first, I've done projects like that before. You have to submit those pay information to the state because you have to justify to the state. You've actually expended that much money, that pre, that other bucket of money on the project before they'll start giving you their money. So that documentation even will exist for your money even if it's spent first. And that's a lot of documentation, you know, quantities, multiple certifications, multiple people looking at it. Before, before it gets here, your people can look at it. They can be involved with that. They want to see it at every step of the way. And that would be their call if they want to get it four times or just the final approval.
Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind me interrupting and asking a question on that one. So if I'm hearing you right, Talbert, if he gets the five point four million dollars and he, and he spends it in before he can get the match. Because as you were saying, D A N R is going to make sure that that money, because they're matching ARPA funds. They're going to make sure that his eyes are dotted and his Ts are crossed to meet all the ARPA because they're going to be given their ARPA funds. So it's going to have almost a double set of eyes, if not a triple set of eyes on it before it even comes back to where the county has to account for.
Right. You have to account for the, that you actually spent the money on the, on, because what the state does is they say, this project for five million. For, for the, I'm just going to use the ten million dollar number. The state's going to say, we say this whole ten million dollars is a project that we would support. So, but you gotta spend your, your five million first. You got to prove you've spent that five million on this project before we give you your money. So it's not as if you spent, you just call them up one day and say, I spent my five million, start sending me yours. It, it's, you got to jump through the hoops and I've done that with, the feds, the feds have done that on some projects I've done. Where they'll allocate different funds, you got to use them in different ways. And Jennifer, she's still here, is right. You do see those blended ones too, but you all, I mean, and, but the state, this, you know. The state crosses their eyes, crosses their eyes and checks their, dots their Ts, I guess, is where I'm going. Is the, the, but the state makes sure that money is used for project. Because what the state doesn't want to do is they don't want to say, we have a ten million dollar project. We want to make sure it's done. And you just tell them you've, you've spent your first five and then all of a sudden they find out you're two million short because you only spent your first three.
Chairman.
Mr. Hancock.
So you're in Meade County. You're not only working for water districts. Are you spending one-time, one-time projects? Are you guys doing one-time projects with bonding? Are you, I mean, how is your county district in here without hopefully?
So Meade County is under the ten. So they got about five point five and we actually, we had commission meeting yesterday. And we did a commission meeting yesterday morning, did tax appeals yesterday afternoon. So it was a good day to deal with all that. The, we set that five point five aside. The, the discussion we had yesterday is. And it's a policy decision. I mean, and every commission has to make their own policy decision. But the policy decision is, and I'm not going to tell you it's unanimous. It seems to be the majority is, is of this. And frankly, is to take that money and find a project you would have never done or something to use that for. As opposed to just filling something you would have done anyway. And that's, that, you know, something that's benefits to a county that you would have never thought you would have the money to do. But benefits the county and there's been some discussions on infrastructure issues. The one thing Meade County doesn't have is, is somebody like the sanitary district here. We have Black Hawk Water, but there's some geographic issues as they've kind of got the area they can naturally build to. And there's been some discussions as to whether we can come up with a project. And those continue, but we've got the five point five. So, so we can kind of do that ten, under the ten, and we got a little bit more flexibility on this than your extra.
What I heard is something, something that you needed anyway, which is the jail. We've been needing the jail for a long time. These are one-time funds. We're going to need to bond for that jail no matter what. We're going to need to bond for other projects besides that. We could bond for eleven million, but that's not going to happen. We're going, we're going to need more if we just use all the ARPA at this time. If you had distributed it with the five million and did a, Rusty's with it, then you need a seven. I'm sorry, you need eleven million dollar bond. Otherwise, you'd only need a seven million dollar bond. Now tell me, why do you bond and who pays for those bonds? I mean, that, that is distributed so people could buy those bonds. Those are taxpayer dollars. Those are people contributing in their county to something that they should, in a sense. It's their jail. It's our jail. It's not Pennington County's jail. It's everybody's jail, right? So when we're, in this case, Pennington County, it can take care of a Pennington County project. In that case, again, the jail has got many needs, public safety, certain things with that jail. Like I said, I'm not against it, but why do something we have to do anyway? We're going to have to bond anyway and we're letting the taxpayers and the people of not only Pennington County. But the surrounding area help pay for that jail because we're not the only ones that use that. So why wouldn't put all the Pennington County money into it? So does that make sense?
I'm not, I'm not following where the, the outside area comes in.
Because who uses the jail? Just Pennington County?
Well, it's, it's our jail.
Okay, so who uses the public safety?
Certainly the, the sheriff generates outside income by housing other prisoners.
Right. And we, and we take city people and we do, many different people participate in that. So who pays for the bonding when they do that? Who buys our bonding and who can participate in that when we sell those bonds, right? So we're having Pennington County residents do it or we having everybody that would be, have a skin in the game for that bonding. Put that, that cash flow and buy those bonds for that jail on something that we needed anyway, right?
You, you've asked me a little bit on that because Pennington County residents do have to satisfy the bond, yeah.
Right. Just Pennington County?
Yeah.
Rapid City doesn't help with that?
Well, they're part of Pennington County, so yes.
They can't buy the bonds?
Sure, they can.
The, the city can't buy, the city people can't buy the bonds?
Sure.
You see what I'm saying?
Individuals can buy the, the bonds, but that's the financing authority.
And it's part of that financing. So they, they can have skin in the game. Other people are putting into the jail that will have skin in the game. I keep saying, it's a win-win situation if you do both. Because it participates both Pennington County and makes that jail so it's something we needed anyway. We can sell the bonds to everybody and instead of doing just seven million, we're going to need eleven million. I have feeling on those bonds, we're going to have, and we saw from. I have a feeling on those bonds, um, we're going to have, and we saw from committee building, we know from Mike. Uh, we have a crisis care center, we have some other needs. It just makes sense to me because of all of those reasons, that it's a win-win situation for Pennington County both ways, so.
Rusty, do you have more? Talbot, do you have more?
The one, uh, the one item I, uh, one thing, a couple of things I'd clarify is. I do know that Custer County has taken 500 thousand of their money and put it up as a potential match for Hermosa. So I know that some counties are out there doing that type of stuff. Hermosa's still, they're, uh, working with the state as to whether they can get the state's money because they've got some side issues going on down there. But, uh, you know, so Custer County's done some of that. So there are some other counties out there looking to help out some of the water systems, that was a water sewer grant. I, and Commissioner Haggard, uh, comments, you know, like I said, it's a policy decision, you know, I'm a lawyer up here, I can tell you legally. This project easily qualifies legally, they have to do all this record keeping that I think is going to be way more record keeping than your auditor would ever usually see. Legally, I think in a way that, uh, it's almost easier to prove up this project than other stuff to use our money because to, to me, these projects are more of a slam dunk to qualify. But when you get to the policy decision of where you want to put your money, that's, that's your guys' call. From the policy standpoint, I, I can turn to my kind of advocacy and, and I do believe. In following up with what Commissioner Haggard said, there, there's a balance there, you need a jail and jails are miserable to pay for and they always need money. But, you need projects like this and, and Commissioner Roskin, I appreciated your comment on where's the risk? Now, I don't think there's a lot of risk funding this that you guys can get stuck. But if you, if you approach it from a standpoint of, you know, where's the risk, there's a risk in not doing a project like this and stimulating growth and slowing growth. I mean, I'm, I've always been a big advocate and that's one of the reasons I really appreciate working with guys like Rusty and his board. Good neighborhoods, good infrastructure makes good citizens and helps keep your jails a little bit less empty. There's a, there's a risk in not supporting projects like this and just not being as good a community as you could be. Now, that's a tough balance because you're, you're making a call as a board. Where, where's the best for your buck and how do I best serve my taxpayers? I truly believe, and, um, and I put my money in my mouth is because I, I kind of said the same thing yesterday in my own commission meeting. That there, that, that this money can be used to do a project that you would have never thought you would have been able to help fund and help get done. Because these other things, the jails, the services, you're going to have those every day and they're always going to cost you money. And it's unlikely they're ever going to generate you money. This one costs you money upfront, but long-term it's going to generate you money.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
And that's why I asked for a continuance at our regular meeting because there's so much information, we weren't going to get this done, uh, at a regular meeting. And, and there's really good information, uh, on both sides and, you know, it's just a balance in that was when do we get the biggest return? Uh, my next question would be the timing, when do we, timing is probably of the essence. Because, uh, there's going to be what, another hearing coming up that the state's going to hear and the funding will eventually run out for match?
Yeah, the, the timing as for, for one, as for, uh, putting forth and getting on to the state water application. We, we have to send it in electronically this week, right? Um, and then after that, we have to have a postmark by Friday, which is all in place already. Um, everything's, uh, ready to go, I did, um, consult with Jennifer just to make sure everything was in order there in case things moved forward. Um, so on that aspect, uh, everything should be covered. The timing and even on as for the projects and such, as we all know, all funds have to be, um, put forth or expended towards the projects. In all actuality, if we move forward on this, and I know we have these funding, these funds from the county, we'll start immediately. You know, we also have to have a facilities plan done by July 1, if I am not mistaken. By, um, so, uh, all of this will be ready to go, um, completion of projects, which is some of the, uh, pass through entity, uh, CFR 200, I was reading through. Um, you gotta have your timelines, you gotta have your end dates and your start dates, right? And then that'll be a question that, I mean, that Dustin could answer, well, we're all speculative a little bit on that, but. No, it'll all be done, completed long before that 2026. The 12 inch water main, uh, designs and, and the tank for this priority one project tying to Cheyenne Boulevard. It's not a real complicated job, it's not like building the treatment plant, right, uh, so, uh, plans and projects could be. And Dustin will probably kill me for this, you know, but I always make, move them up two months ahead of what he says, right? But, um, you know, three to four months for plans to be completed and submitted and to go off of that with the project completion. Um, I've already contacted suppliers of tanks and all this and it is critical, I mean, that we allocate, move forward this year. Um, pricing's changing, prices changing already today within the next two weeks on these, on this, uh, infrastructure stuff, but. Um, no, tank, uh, uh, priority project one, um, could be, would be done, I, I would say at 20, end of 2023 to mid 2024.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LaCroy.
Is you done Ron? Just some more clarification, Rusty, looking at this and listening to the discussion. If you do not get the DNR match, you want to move along with phase one. Do you have a problem coming back to this commission and, and saying, okay, we didn't get the match? Now let's do it the other way by maybe. Research, recycling it and being able, so we don't have all the restrictions on the, on the. 5.486 million dollars. At that time, that might be a question for both Cindy and, and you. Say we, we say, okay, we're going to do this with the ARPA, our, the ARPA funds, but you didn't get the DNR. So then you come back to us, can we? Take that 5.4, put it back as we discussed and then reallocate. Out of, uh, community building fund for this project if we choose without all the restrictions. Because then, then the, you know, we're not dealing with DNR anymore, right? And then what we're doing is, is getting it in our systems and so we can, as a commissioner, say, here you go, you just report. Without all the, the restrictions from, uh, ARPA funds, are you going to do it something along those lines?
If, if, if that's a possibility to go that route and you're, you're saying using funds from like your general fund in a different direction? I still would have to, you know, um, plans and everything would be submitted through D A and R and, and, uh, you know, the standard procurements. I believe you're still being a sub, a pass through entity, that's being a sub recipient in that direction. You know, we don't have a match necessarily, but, uh, you know, if we don't get the match, we'll be going for, we'll have to go for a loan for that. Because that source water well is very vital too, so, um. Yeah, that'd be a question for.
Well.
It'd be an SRF.
Well, yeah, exactly, I, all I'm saying is if that DNR doesn't fall through, I mean, if it, we, we get it, great, that's, we're getting the match, it's a double wing. But if something falls through, we don't get that. You know, then we're still with that, with that 500 and, uh, 5.4, we still got to go through all the, all that paperwork. If we can find a way to not have to do that. You know what I'm saying?
Right, right, no, I understand, I mean.
That's why I'd say, you're getting the willingness to, because you still want to do phase one and you still want to bu, or borrow for some other, I think we could still work out that other way. Is that a possibility?
It might, it might save you some paperwork, but I'm assuming your auditors would still want to.
Well, and if, if you get the loan from the state anyway, you still go through the same process of submitting your pay request. Because if it's an SRF loan, they make you do the same verification. So you don't, they don't, DNR does not come out of the mix if you got an SRF loan and don't get the, don't get the grant.
So how much would you borrow from the SRF if you don't get the DNR?
What's that?
How much would you borrow from the?
We would have to, for the remaining amount to, to finish the project.
The other 5 million?
Because, uh, I mean, this is a, what other timing, we're going to be able to get a potential mass to cover this, uh, cost, but, uh, it's vital. I mean, if I were, the district is going to willing to share our resources and share what county residents within district boundaries paid for. But we're going, willing to utilize it to other county residents outside of district boundaries. We need if, you know, our source water is adequate for our growth and what we've annexed, but. We need to be very proactive and stay ahead of that because if we're going to start, uh, utilizing some of this for others outside of our boundaries, then. We need to find more source water, otherwise we'll, we'll be, uh, you know. You know, uh, behind, behind the game there a little bit, you know, so.
I do have one more speaker, new speaker, uh, Representative Tim Goodwin.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while he's coming up here, can I ask a quick question, uh, just to clarify for it, Commissioner LaCroy was talking about. Rusty, uh, there's still a time constraint, even if we, if you didn't get the match and we said, we're not going to use the ARPA funds for this. And we need to allocate 5 million in some other manner, we're going to come back and we're going to discuss where that budget to come from. Which might be a time issue for you if we do that because you just said in two weeks, you already know that the, uh, item product, item costs are going to go up, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, um, they're going to go up, they, they average, I actually talked to one of the suppliers at Corin Maine and on an average it raises, uh. Costs go up monthly, at least once a month and the time constraint is, uh, because. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful and positive that we'll get the match. But, uh, in order to even find out the time restraint on the other end of it is, I have to get this all submitted tomorrow and, or Fri, Friday at the latest, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Representative Goodwin, welcome.
Thanks for having me, uh, the reason I'm here, you probably wonder, what's this dude doing here, this isn't even his district, but last November, we redistricted, it was bloody three days. And I lost the last three precincts in Pennington County and I got Rapid Valley and the, the green, uh, the green, uh. The, the Green Valley area and so this is part of my district now. But I would just be telling you where, where we're at the state and kind of relate to what you guys are going through. You know, we're drunk with federal money that's borrowed that we shouldn't be spending, but we can't send it back. So I think the key there is how do we leverage it? If we can leverage it, we have matching funds, that's a good use of it, but we can't, they can't say, it's a, you know. Being a conservative, it hurts us to spend this money, especially when we know that it was borrowed money and we're 30 trillion in debt nationally. But we can't send it back and if you could, it would go to another state, it isn't going to go to draw down the national debt. So once you get your head clear of that, then you can start thinking, okay, is there a way we can spend this money and leverage it? So anytime you can get a two to one match, that's a great deal. Now I appreciate, uh, uh, Commissioner Roskin's comment, well, down the road, we got to build a new jail. Well, at the state, we got to build the new penitentiary at 660 billion versus 30, uh, but, uh, we have more funds than they do at the county too, but, uh. And so what are you going to do? So, I think you just got to look at return on investment. I think us government people sometimes, and we're not really government because we're all part-time, but we, we, we actually run the government. Is we're not good at looking at return on investment, if you spend a buck, what do you get back? And this is definitely a return on investment on infrastructure. I think, uh, Representative Hancock was getting like, well, if we build all these houses, how much do you pay in property tax? I mean, you don't want to know what I pay, you'll get scared. Uh, so that's all going to be coming in as revenue too and it's not one time, it's ongoing, it's residual. Residual is a good word, it means it's always coming. And so I just think this is a, a great project and the other thing that if you're, if you're on the fence, if you should go for this or not. Just look at Rusty, I mean, where do you get a guy like this? I mean, I heard about this guy for years and after I got redistricting, I, I had to go meet him, I mean, he's like a legend. I mean, you don't get people like him. And so with him running the program and what we could do for the infrastructure with a 5 million, uh, you know, and a, and a straight, uh. Two to one match from the state. And also I'd be willing to be your liaison with, uh, with, uh, DNR, I don't know if you remember, but Governor Rome combined agriculture and DNR together. And so they have one secretary running that agency, it was more efficient, actually cut down on seven full-time state employees. And have one secretary instead of two, and the guy that runs that now is, uh, Hunter Roberts. There's, everybody's pretty old, Travis, you're not very old, but everybody else is pretty old, I don't know if you remember, uh, the congressman we had, uh. God, it might have been the 60s or 70s, uh, Clint Roberts, he was a congressman for South Dakota, he was the Marlboro Man. That's who, he looked like the Marlboro Man on the commercials, and that goes back a long time when there was cigarette commercials. Anyway, the secretary of DNR is the Marlboro Man's grandson. And so, uh, he's, he's got a deep image there in Pierre and his, and his mother was, uh, I think secretary of several different agencies. When you were the mayor over in Pierre, Commissioner, uh, you probably knew, uh, knew of her then too, so. I'd be willing to be a liaison with him, uh, to go through his agency if you need any help, he's a great guy. I mean, he's just doing a bang up job being the secretary of egg and DNR. And I, I also do sit on that, uh, that committee and so I've worked with him for the last four years in that capacity, so. Any help I could do, I'd be more than willing to help you with it, so, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Representative. Okay, the only other speaker request I have is from Bill Freitag. Bill spoke last time, if you have something new, you can share it with us, Bill?
Bill Freitag. You know, I, I can hear you talking about, you know, get the money in, get it out, get it back, get it back in again, that's wise. And you can do that, it's really not even that hard to do, it's just kind of, uh, nobody ever puts the effort into it. But I did some math and I, I've got accurate numbers. I didn't generate these myself, I got ahold of the auditor today and I let her give me the numbers, so. When I build a house that gets a $250,000 assessed value, okay? And then I'm going to assume that this guy does owner occupied, so that whacks that number down a little bit. And then I thought, well, I got to figure out how much area we're going to do and how many, and how to calculate how many lots or how many houses we're going to get into it. So I used the same model that I just completed in the last, uh, less than 24 months in Rapid Valley. And that was 3.3 units per acre. Then I took 500 acres, so just arbitrarily, let's take 500 acres. So that creates 1,650 lots or 1,650 houses. If I'd have been working on those 1,650 and the other guys in, in my industry 18 months ago, like we should have been. We would, you'd just about have probably at least half of those online, but for what that's worth. But what that produces, that $250,000 assessed value, that's going to bring you 1,000, 1,933 dollars and 800, uh, and 800 dollars to the county. That's not to the city or to the school or any, that's your take, almost 2 million bucks. For 500 acres for 1,650 houses. 1,650 houses isn't going to house, um, the airplane, the people for the airplane. So, but I had to give you something that would make sense, so I did 500 acres, I used a current model. And those are, those are not little dinky houses, they're two, they're, uh, two and three bedroom houses, two bath, two car garage houses. And with that, uh, that assessment, you got 2 million bucks coming in every year for every 1,650 of them, okay? Now, if you tiff it, which we should be doing, because now that, that 1933, the biggest chunk we're going to get is another 3 million. 212 dollars through a tiff. The tiff comes in, as long as you fund this thing upfront and we bring the money back to you and you got it again, you can spend it again. Then we'll get it back to you and then you spend it again, that's, that makes a lot of sense and that's how you should do that. To get good at that and to figure out your business model for that, um, it's going to take a little bit of effort, I would volunteer my time as a, a land developer to help you. As much as I could in, in that, because I really believe in that concept. But you've got, like everybody's talking about an investment, it is, and I know you, you're fighting this thing against the jail, but. The interest on here is going, actually the, if you were tipping it, the revenue from here is going to probably pay for your jail. But you could easily pay the interest on a bond from this and still have money left and then if we bring it back in, send it back out again, it just keeps multiplying. So I would encourage you to do that and I want you to understand some, I'm dead serious here, we're 18 months behind this, behind the curve right now. If you guys put me back another 1,800 months, I don't, or 18 months, I don't know.
But I don't, I don't think we're the ones that put it, put us behind that 18 months.
I didn't say, well, I'm sorry if you took it as a meant you, but I.
Well, you, you said if you put us back another 18 months.
Government put us back, let me try it that way. Government, government is, um, government's pretty much ignored the water problem that we have here and the, and it's, the problem is that we don't got water. We have a ton of water, but what we have is we have inefficient government to get the water out to where it needs to be. And so we got to start addressing that, we should have been addressing it 18 months ago because as it is today, you can't water the airplane. the airplane. We can't water the housing today that it takes for that airplane, not because we don't have water, but because government's in our way and we can't do it. So I would encourage you to, let's get this going and get it funded, and then the next hill to climb is, let's get Rusty's water rights.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So, Bill, on your model, how many housing units?
1,600, in 500 acres, I can do 1,650, and that's using a current model, that's a reasonable lot, not a, not one of these really, really tiny ones, it's kind of a moderate-sized lot now, but I can get 1,650 of those for every 500 acres.
So what's your absorption rate?
Oh, well, like mine, it, it should have been a three or four-year project normally, it didn't take two years, it was, it was absorbed, in fact, the second phase of it was sold out.
Here's, assuming the supply and demand stay the same, interest rates stay, there's a lot of variables out there, that's why, I'm just curious what the absorption rate was, because there's assumptions that you gotta make, you know, this is the demand, this is the supply, this is cost of materials, and this is gonna be the interest rates, so.
There is, but there's, there's other things to, to consider in that too. There was four people in Rapid City yesterday, went to the Board of Realtors and asked them how they, what their thoughts were and how they were going to solve some of this, and, because they don't have the answers either, they're looking for answers. Well, one thing, South Dakota Housing Authority is probably a really good source for us to be going to even get, get the infrastructure money that the developer needs, and then also get the long-term financing for the end user. And, but, you know, I think that's a possibility also. There's, if there's a will, there's a way. If there's not a will, or if you, you know, then it's just a waste of light on himself.
So Chairman.
Commissioner.
So bottom line, almost 2,000 houses, what kind of help does that do for economy for building? I mean, that, that's not just for taxes, that adds a lot of different things for Pennington County and the residents in the surrounding areas, so that's building houses, that's not just infrastructure, so, that being said, keep saying it's a win-win situation, and it's a participation in something that I believe in two projects that are well-needed, and one will fund itself in the long run and bring us a, a benefit to the taxpayers, and the other, in a sense, is a, is a need, it's not a want, but we can bond and still do the same thing and have the, all the taxpayers participate in it, so, do we need a motion, Chair, or?
I think Commissioner LaCroy is preparing one.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd make a motion to approve 5.5,486,000 dollars of ARPA funds to Rapid Valley Sanitary Super District on the condition with the match from DNR of 5 million. If they fail to get the, the match from DNR, I think they, they need to come back to the commission.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Adkar.
Go ahead, Travis first, please.
So I think this is kind of a concern of mine with saying that that money's gonna come back, and that's why I had Rusty clarify. If we allocate the funds now, for some reason, he doesn't get the match, I'm pretty positive, he seems pretty positive that he's gonna get the match, but if he doesn't, then he doesn't get to start moving forward with the project, if I understand what he was saying, which then could basically cost us more money long-term, so unless you're gonna commit the same amount of money to Rusty in the, in the motion, regardless whether it gets ARPA or not, or the ARPA match, then we may end up having to, you know, allocate, you know, 5,600,000 or 5,800,000 or more. If he, if he just takes the straight-up ARPA funds, even if he doesn't get the match, he can actually do the Priority One project with our ARPA funds, and then he can do the bonding or the loans or whatever for his Priority Two project, which is actually specific to his district. So Priority One is for the county, to impact the county, to basically allow the county to get continuous revenue as that infrastructure gets placed in, and then he, he would do it the other way. That's, that's what my concern with putting that restriction on there is. I understand it, because we've talked about it a little bit, but looking at it and hearing how everything is playing out here today, I think it's better just to allocate those ARPA funds regardless what happens, because you'll still get Priority One project done, which is gonna benefit the county long-term.
Right, so.
I'll support the motion as made with the coming back so that we can re-discuss it, but I won't support it the other way.
So, Chairman.
Commissioner Adkar.
And I respect what you just said, Chairman Drews, but the 5 million is ready to push the button and start the project. So, once we do that, he's gonna push the button also to get the other matching, the second part of the project, so if you look at the project, Commissioner Drews, the first part is 5 million. So, if we push the button now and we say 5 million, move forward, he's got the 1.5 for the engineering, he's gonna push the button to put, get the matching, and so he's already moving forward, right, to do that 5 million project. The other 5 million, Travis is right, remember when you saw the blue part and the red part on here, wherever that is, here? The blue part is gonna get done with the 5 million, makes sense? So he's good to go, he's moving. If he doesn't get the matching, right, and he's already moving forward, and we said, you know, are we saying, does he have to wait till he gets the matching? Because that's not gonna come in right away. What we're saying is, if we're giving him 5 million, we have to give him 5 million, and he's gonna move forward. If you say, if you, you have to come back to us if you don't get the matching, are you saying, once he's already moving forward, we gave him the 5 million? We need to have the discussion on that other 5, 5 million that you didn't get.
I'm, I'm saying that for our purposes, for the county purposes.
Yes, sir.
I listened to what our county auditor said to us.
Yes.
And I think it's much preferred that if the match is not there, that we exchange those dollars. And so that's where I'm gonna stand on that, is that it would be exchange of dollars and not be ARPA dollars that would be used for it then.
Now, I see, so, I misunderstood, so what I, what you're saying is, either way, he's gonna get the 5, it's just, if you want him to get the match, we're still gonna do it, but we'll have to do it a different way, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that consideration has to be given some other way other than ARPA funds, then.
Okay, and if, and here's the other thing, so, Rusty, tell me how long it takes to figure out if you got ARPA funds, so you're not being able to start right away.
Well, Jennifer could probably answer that, but I believe I, we won't know if we get funding, or how much funding we get, it'll be in the September timeframe, so by July 1, we will all have to have a facility studies completed by our engineers, so, you know, I, I don't know what the cost of that is, 20,000 to 30,000, somewhere in there, so, maybe more. Our last facility study was 80,000, but, so, yeah, funding, I wouldn't know, you know, actually what we're getting until the September timeframe, so it's, you know, somewhat critical to know if we're gonna be able to utilize these funds or not. I understand what you're saying, but I think it's key, and, you know, and maybe Jennifer or Talbot could answer this better, but from my understanding, it does need to be ARPA funds in order to be able to be eligible for a match. So if it's funds from the county, from the general fund, I don't believe we'll be able to have a match from in a different direction, but she can answer that.
Go ahead.
That, that's actually what you said earlier, is that if you use general fund, what Gary is saying is that if you submit your application and they don't, and, and I would need clarification on this as well, if they don't receive the one-to-one match, because if they don't receive the one-to-one match, which is grant, there's still an opportunity that DNR will fund that with loan, and that will be dependent on, one, availability of funds. If they run out of the ARPA dollars by the time they get to fund this project, then it's possible he would receive only loan, so I would need clarification, if he takes the loan, is your 5.4 million still part of the project, or what happens in, in that situation? Because a project won't come away from the Board of Water Natural Resources unfunded, it's just that if it doesn't receive, if you put in 5.4 and we only apply for the difference, that can either be awarded in grant or loan. If it's not one-to-one match, because they've ran out of it, it would end up being loan, so does that still count as DNR-funded? I think what you're trying to look at here is, to ensure that the requirement or the burden of ensuring that all of the clean water SRF program, or drinking water SRF program rules are, are being met, is that the safeguard of having state funding as part of the funding package, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I think for clarification, if his, if his project receives funding from DNR, whether it's ARPA, one-to-one match, or whether it's SRF loan, or any other form, I would say, your, your money would still stand, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, was there another question in there that didn't?
Should I clarify that motion?
Cindy, did you have something you wanted to add to that? Sorry, Rusty.
Don't go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows, we have not received that 12 million yet. We have the first hand, but we don't have the 12, and then if we do start spending down our ARPA funds for the county projects, which then frees up the money in the general fund, it's not gonna be like that 12 million's gonna be freed up in the general fund in, over one year. It's gonna be over a period of years. Just wanted to make sure we have the cash flow piece of that as well.
Do we know, based on last year, when did we receive those funds? Was it June?
Was it May, Casey? It was in May.
So, would you anticipate?
Hopefully, yeah. They said a year, so, we're assuming May, but we don't know.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a clarifying question?
I was gonna clarify my motion.
Sorry, but I just wanna, clarify your motion, but I just wanted to ask a clarifying question to Cindy before she walked away.
Okay.
Not Rusty who's gonna clarify it.
My clarifying question is, since we have the 10 million already in hand, we can't kinda switch out those funds, or those 10 million have to be allocated until we wait for the, the other 12 million to get here, or is there a kind of shifting where we could, it's 10 million regardless, it's not this 10 million that we have in our hands?
That's correct. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, in the, in the scope of funding everything, we keep the cash flow in mind.
Roger, thanks.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Adkar.
If we're talking about cash flow, I don't think the jail's gonna be ready to use that 10 million right away either. I mean, they're gonna start having to do design plans and everything, so I don't know if that frees up any until they get the other 12 million or not. Lloyd, could you do me a favor and clarify what, what you meant?
Just been sitting here waiting.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Yeah, the 5.48, 5,486,000 would require of ARPA funds for DNR match slash our loan.
If I, if I may clarify, Commissioner.
Please.
The number with the new spreadsheet, because the actual total project is 10.458 million in construction total between the two projects. Project Priority One, which is the, the tank and water main, the new number is, is 5.349070.
So, with that number?
That's the, that's the current, 5.349070.
49.
I don't see that number on my stuff, what was it again, Rusty?
It's on this paper.
If I may, I can present a few.
Yes.
It's actually upon screen.
Lloyd goes.
I can pull it up here.
Secretary okay with that?
So, so you're saying, Lloyd, if I can clarify that, first of all, we're going, we would grant him that money if, the 5.349, if he got matching funds? If he comes back and we find out in September?
Grant our loan.
What?
Grant our loan.
Grant?
Our loan.
Matching, grant, or loan?
Matching, grant, our loan.
Okay, so loan, like, loan to him through ARPA funds?
No, he would get.
He would have to get the loan from the state.
Okay. And then, oh, I see what you're saying, okay, I thought you meant grant or loan. And then, when you said, okay, getting tired, so, that makes sense.
Secretary's okay with that.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. Go ahead, Rusty.
I just saw my clarification, the 5.349070, through ARPA funds, as long as we get the match of the 5 million, and if not, then we can get the loan, but the county will still give us the 5.349.
Yeah, if you don't get the loan, then will you come back to us?
If I don't get the match.
Yeah.
Or the loan.
You understand?
Any further discussion by the Commissioner?
Can I just clarify the amount? You said 5,486,000, correct?
That number changed, it's 5,349,070.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
The remainder of that funding, I would designate the remainder to the state and local physical recovery funds, ARPA, to, to utilize allowable expenditures related to addiction treatment, mental health, and providing administrative social services to public benefits.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, approximately 6.6 million is what that's gonna amount to, so.
Whatever the difference is.
Any further discussion?
Thanks.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes? Motion carried.
I just, if I may, I just wanna thank you Commissioners for taking your time and accepting our proposal and moving forward, and I believe this is a big first step in, in our entire community, so thank you.
I'm hoping we can work together on that regional, get things going on that.
No, absolutely. I got, we got more ideas to bring to eventually, you know.
Mr. Chair. You know, I talked about risk, when I see Rusty and Talbot, that really, you know, the integrity of you two, that really gives me a comfort level, so good luck going forward.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Rusty does, I don't know about that Talbot.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes? Motion carried.